The El Segundo City Council meeting today is June the eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Welcome, everybody. All right, we're going to start with the... Oh, at this point, I just want to let everyone know that Mayor Boils and Councilman Pimentel are out of the country. One is in Sweden, or one is in France, and one is in Mexico, and they're on the phone here. So, they will be participating in the meeting, but will be via conference. So, at this time, we'd like to stand for the pledge allegiance given by Dr. Brand, and the invocation's going to be done by Pastor Diana Ferguson from St. Michael's Episcopal Church. So, we're going to start with the invocation.
Most gracious and loving God, you call together the El Segundo City Council meeting tonight from around the world to work for the benefit of our community. We give you thanks for the blessings of technology that allow us to meet from our far-flung locations, and we ask your guidance and presence at this meeting. Guide our council members tonight to engage in meaningful discussion and to discern what is truly important. Help them to speak clearly and listen to others with open ears and hearts. Guide their deliberations and give them courage to make the right decisions. Fill us all with your grace, Lord. God bless us and the people of this community, and continue to remind us that all we do here this evening is in service to others. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Free, the republic, whose system, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope you had a flag there.
Hear you loud and clear there, buddy.
I said, "Hi, Chris." I mean, Scott?
You might have been the loudest voice in the room.
All right.
I'm sorry. I'll try to hear.
So, we do have a presentation today. We have the July twenty-ninth, July two thousand and nineteen, as the Parks and Recreation Month. Dr. Brand is going to read the proclamation.
Evening, everyone. My pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of El Segundo, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the city of El Segundo recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, on this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and nineteen, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby proclaims the month of July, two thousand and nineteen, as Parks and Recreation Month, and in doing so urges all its citizens to use and enjoy its parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreation opportunities. Signed by Mayor Drew Boils. The presentation will go to Park and Recreation Director Meredith Pettit.
Thank you very much. (APPLAUSE).
Do you want to go up there?
No. I think it's okay.
I hope that proclamation actually says today's day, not July.
Here we go. Good luck, guys. Here, one more. Hey, you look so nice. One more. Very good. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Well, thank you very much for the proclamation. As we say in our professional organization, California Parks and Recreation Society, we use the slogan, "Parks Make Life Better." And so, it's really... July is obviously a busy month for us. Summer is very busy, but we do want to take the moment to designate the month and recognize that parks do really make lives better. We see seniors exercising every day at Jocelyn Center. We see teenagers grow up through the teen center and become employees, and adults working out and fitting that into their schedule. So, everything that we do, I think, touches people in a different way, and I wanted just to recognize all of the staff who make that possible. We have countless lifeguards, camp counselors. Yesterday was the first Monday of ten weeks of very, very busy activities, and so, we're just gearing up, and just want to let everybody know that we have a lot of surprises around the corner for July as Parks and Recreation Month, so just keep your eyes and ears out for those. And, thank you. We look forward to an awesome summer.
Thank you, Meredith. (APPLAUSE). Okay, would you like to... We'd like to start with roll call.
Councilmember Nichol?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel? Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Mayor Protem Persak?
Here.
And Mayor Boils?
Here.
All right, we'll move into public communications, related to city business only, for five minutes. Limit per person. Anyone would like to come and speak? Now's your time.
My name... Excuse me. My name is Paula Cook, and I'm a resident here in El Segundo. And my husband and Jim and I just completed the Community Emergency Response Training over at Fire Station Number Two, and so, I would just like to commend Jeff Gurney, who's the firefighter in charge of the program, and all the firefighters over there. It was a really, really great training. I also want to... I hope we never have the big one, but if we do, I'm better... I feel better prepared. I also want to thank City Council for providing funding for this program, or otherwise, it wouldn't go anywhere, and I would like to encourage my fellow residents to take the training. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. It is definitely a very good program. We have a lot of people signing up for it, so thank you for your participation. Any more public communication? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public communication. And we're going to start with procedural motions, consideration of possible motion to be read, all ordinance and resolutions on an agenda by item only.
So, I'm moved.
Wait, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Wait. We're going to do a roll call.
Hold on, we got to...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Got to vote by roll call.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
So, now, we need a voice vote. So, Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Aye.
Councilmember Brand?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Persak?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Aye.
Five-oh.
Can we go back one second to City Council comments for the public communication?
Oh, yeah, sure.
We cannot stress enough how important this CERT training is. When we did our tabletop exercise for emergency, you know, in case of an emergency, it was clear that those trained, those certified through the CERT program will be a vital part of our town, and the more people we have in town certified through CERT will only help us handle the situation that much better. So, if you haven't yet, look into it, pay attention to our social media outlets, and I think it's also published in the paper when they're going to do it. But I highly recommend every citizen in town willing and able to participate and get certified.
Thank you, Scott. All right, at this juncture, we're going to actually move item number three forward, which is the consideration of possible action to appoint a city manager and approve an employment agreement with the appointed city manager. Fiscal impact to be announced.
So, Madam Mayor Protem, I think that you were going to describe Mr. Mitnick's background and some of the rationale behind his selection, as well as Dr. Brand?
Yep. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Scott Mitnick, who has over thirty years of public service experience, including twenty-one years at the executive level. Mr. Mitnick has eleven years of experience as a city manager for the city of Thousand Oaks, including leading the organization through the Great Recession of twenty-seven, two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine. When Mr. Mitnick also served... Mr. Mitnick also served two years at the county administrator for Sutter County, his prior experience including serving as Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager, Administration and Services Director, and Budget Officer. Scott has attained his Master's of Public Administration from Syracuse University's Maxwell School of Citizenship and Public Affairs, and his Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from the California State University, Fullerton. Scott is inactive... Scott is... Excuse me. Scott is active in promoting good government by authoring and contributing to in editing professional articles, books, and serving as a guest lecturer with UCLA, USC, Syracuse University, Bristol University, which is in England, including other local universities. So, at this time, I'd like to invite my other council members to speak on the process and on Scott's selection.
I'd like to begin and say what a privilege it's been for the council to ask me to spearhead the check on the background and experience record. I'm thrilled to be here tonight after working through this over the last several weeks. We've absolutely got an experienced and motivated city manager here who basically has a calling to be a city manager and is very excited to be here in the city of El Segundo. It's been a pleasure to work through this, and I'm so excited about this day coming. He'll be starting on the first of July, and that's not very long from now, and it's just the match that we were looking for, for our city. In one of these selection processes, the candidate chooses the city, and the city chooses the best candidate, the best match, and that's occurred here, and we're just very thrilled about the years ahead. We've been doing good, but we're going to take it to the next level now, and our best years are ahead of us, as everyone would want. So, I'm just excited that we're at this transaction here, and that means we're about ready for a new beginning. Thank you.
Drew, do you and Chris want to say anything?
All right, but I refer to Chris. Would you like to go first? No, I have nothing to add. I'm delighted about the selection and happy to move forward. Yeah, I'll just add that this decision culminates at least seventy hours of council time in interview processes, due diligence. Councilman Brand actually visited Scott and his wife in Thousand Oaks. Don and I did due diligence with past colleagues, employees, supervisors of Scott, Mr. Mitnick, and we feel really good about our decision, really good, and we're really looking for somebody that can craft that compelling vision of where we want to bring this city, align with our five strategic objectives. That same person needs to be able to really lead people and resources, create a choice employer environment, and also be able to make some tough decisions along the way, and we are absolutely certain that Scott brings the necessary skill set, the mindset, and the personality traits to make that happen. El Segundo knows of Scott. Sorry, I couldn't be there this evening, but we're very pleased to have you joining our city. Thank you.
And I'll just add that the interview process was very interesting. It was, as Mayor Boils says, many hours, many, many more hours than I think any one of us would have wished to have spent in this process, but I will say that every council member did their due diligence, every council member dug deep and asked questions, and did not make this process easy, I don't think, which we will find... probably come to find soon. But we haven't voted yet. I have a sneaking suspicion, though, it might be the first time that you have five people that agree on something in this room in a long time. So, with that, Carol?
All right, so, anyone like to make a motion?
I want to say one more thing, that the most important thing a city council does is select the city manager, and we are moving forward here and leaving this as a legacy to the city that should be just a great gift and something that will keep paying off for years to come, and after we're not up here on the dais, but somebody else is. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anyone like to make a motion?
I saw move that we appoint Scott Mitnick as El Segundo City Manager and approve the employment agreement with him.
I'll second that.
All right. I'd like to make Madam Clerk like to take a roll call.
Scott Nichol, or, excuse me, sorry, Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
They're just going to be on first-name basis today. Councilmember Pimentel? Councilmember Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Persak?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Aye.
Five-oh.
Thank you. So, we now have a new city manager in Scott Mitnick. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? Give us a little bit of... We read your bio background, but a little bit of information about you and who you are and what you see for the future of El Segundo.
Excuse me. Happy to do that. Is this on?
Yes.
Well, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the council, including the two in different countries, and everybody here in the audience, it's indeed an honor and a privilege to be here. This was an involved process, and I can assure you, in the private sector, it's a lot easier. But that's a good thing, because it's a big decision for the city council, for the executive team, for the employees, and, most importantly, for the community, and you want to get it right. So, I feel that I've earned this one. It was an involved process, but congratulations to the city council, and you need to be commended for being so thorough. If that's any indication how serious you take your role, that's a good sign. I do have some comments I'd like to go over, and first, I want to just acknowledge and give recognition and thanks to Greg Harpner for your years of public service and the culmination here in retiring and all of that. We've had a brief conversation, but he did promise to be there when I have questions, ask for explanations as to why things are, but you need to be commended, so well done. And I look forward to building on the foundation that you and others before you laid to improve on it and make it better. So, you should feel proud of your service. I'd also like to thank the city council for your support and your vote of confidence in me as your next city manager. It's very humbling. I'm excited to be back in city management, as Dr. Brand had indicated. It is a calling, and I feel blessed to have been a city manager and a county administrator, and for the folks in the room, I started out in this business a long time ago at the very lowest level as a volunteer intern many years ago, and then worked my way up. So, I've been in the shoes of many of the people in the room here in the different positions, all the way from the entry-level intern analyst to being a supervisor, division head, assistant department head, department head, deputy city manager, city manager, et cetera, county administrator, and then two brief stints in the private sector as an investment banker, and currently as a municipal advisor, financial advisor with a really good firm. So, I understand the pressures that the employees face. I really, really get it, and it's... The employees are the lifeblood of the organization. This is the... We're in the people business, so I'm aware of that. And before I make comments about El Segundo, I'd like to talk briefly about my current employer and some of the other places I've worked, so you get a little more insight. I'm wrapping up my stint with KNN Public Finance. They're headquartered in Oakland, and they're a quality firm. They've been at it for about four decades. They do a lot of work in this area. Manhattan Beach is a client of theirs. It's a hard decision to leave working there. I thought I was going to go there for the long haul, and then this opportunity came up. I want to acknowledge the Chief Executive Officer, David Lifer. He's been really supportive, and the whole firm has been very supportive of this move, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to work there, even though it was a limited period of time. And then, prior to that, two years with Sutter County. I will say this, I was there a little more than two years, and if every city manager had to be a county administrator for two years, and if every county administrator had to be a city manager for two years, we would get along much better. And I've been on... I've been through some very difficult issues involving Ventura County with Thousand Oaks, and then, when I was in Burbank, I remember some of the challenges with LA County. But having been in the county administrator job for two years, I'll have a totally different approach as a city manager. Counties are impressive, they're awesome, and running a county is way harder. I'm going to confess and say it on the record for all the county administrators out there, it's a tough job, and the pressures and the level of responsibilities that come with running a county, it's just way different. And so, I can assure you, we're not going to have battles with LA County, and if we have issues, I'll be able to approach it and advise you based on having that insider experience, and I really understand how a county administrator's office views the world. So, we'll get along very well that way. We may not like the outcome, but at least we'll have respect going into the discussions. And I just loved working up there to make it clear, it was my decision to leave, and it was for personal and family reasons. I was... My family was still down in Thousand Oaks, and I was working up there, and the logistics became really difficult, but it was a great board of supervisors up there. They were very supportive, and the organization had more than a thousand employees. They did a whole array of services. They had a lot of challenges up there, but I'm proud of the executive team, and I'm proud of the staff in the county administrator's office. So, if they watch this, or they hear me, I'm just so proud of the team assembled and the work that they did, and they have a really good interim county administrator, and hopefully he'll be made permanent. Steve Smith is his name, doing a great job. So, leaving there was a tough decision. Prior to that, I was in Thousand Oaks for under seventeen years, eleven years, as mentioned, as the city manager, and I'm so proud of what was achieved during my tenure there. We went through difficult times, just like here in El Segundo. They had to reduce the workforce by quite a bit. I think one hundred and fifteen full-time positions were cut out during the recession, and it was tough. We lost the redevelopment agency. They had an active redevelopment agency, and that was really hard on that community because the agency paid for a lot of important public works projects, and projects for the schools, actually. So, dealing with that transition was really tough, but you get the best out of your employees, and you see what your men and women are made of during those tough times, and I'm so proud of how we came together and made those tough decisions, learned a lot of life lessons going through that. It's hard to lay people off. It's hard to cut back on services, but the innovation and creativity that come through those tough times, it's really a good thing in the long run. I watched that city transition from being a solid or middle-class community to more of a high-end, upper-income community. They went from a growing community to a built-out community, and that was an interesting experience. There's a lot of challenges. This is a built-out community. There's a lot of challenges when you are built out. It's hard to grow your way out of challenges, and you have to focus more inward. But I enjoyed working for the different city councils there, and many of the council members there are just first-rate, and it was an honor to work for them. The caliber of the executive team, I was there and assembled most of the team that's still there. They came to their positions during my tenure, and I'm proud of them. Again, I said earlier, the greatest asset any public organization has is its employees, and I'm proud of the five hundred or so employees that are there in Thousand Oaks. And if any of them are watching, I want them to know that they're awesome, and they have contributed to make that a truly high-performance organization. Now, with respect to El Segundo, Mayor Protem, you asked me, "Why do you want to come here?" And you, as a city council, are doing so many things that are positive and progressive. You may think, "Well, this is the way it should be done," because you come... Many of... Four or five of you come out of the private sector. Dr. Brand, with all your years of running the school districts, you have a similar perspective. I'd like to share with you and for everybody here in the audience, that's a good thing. You're interested in goals and objectives and strategic plans, and you have the facilities master plan that you're working through, and you're thinking about the future. You're not just thinking about, "How do I get through the next year or two years? How do I get re-elected?", but you're thinking long haul. Not a lot of cities are doing that. They're getting... They're focusing on day by day by day, and as was mentioned, the perfect fit between city manager and council. And throughout my career, I've been blessed to work on long-term financial plans and strategic plans, and the fact that you're embracing that, that's really cool. And I'm thrilled to be here to help you and the organization with that. And for the employees, do know that when you do long-term planning, it's actually a good thing. You shouldn't fear it, you should embrace it, and I look forward to working with the city council and the employees to do that. And I'm excited also, as I mentioned, to return to a city government and a community like this. El Segundo has a proud tradition of being independent and very self-confident, and I think that's a good thing. That's a good thing, and I look forward to being part of that. I would like to stress that I look forward to working with the department heads, the employees, the unions, and then all the different service groups or special interest groups, and I don't mean that in a negative way, the different service clubs, the faith-based organizations, et cetera, and then the adjacent cities, and I mentioned the nonprofits, and of course, your business community. You have a solid, strong local economy, and I look forward to working with the different businesses as they try to grow, and there's challenges with that, right? You almost have too much of a good thing. So, how do you balance that, right? All these jobs are coming in here, but how do you house them? And what does that do to housing prices, and how do you provide the high level of services that they expect? So, I have a lot of thoughts and experiences in dealing with that. So, in summing up, I'm looking forward to working with the city council, the employees and the community as you tackle challenges, and you have some really difficult challenges. Every local government's dealing with the PERS issue, OPEB issues, unfunded liabilities, you know. You could become overwhelmed with that, but let me just stress, that's really... It really should be viewed more as an opportunity and not as a problem, and we'll spend some time on that. So, when you have these long-term challenges, it provides an opportunity to bring forward interesting and creative solutions, and there are a lot of tools in the toolbox to do that. So, El Segundo has a bright future, and I'm proud to be part of it and help build on the foundation that's been laid, but do so in a very positive way going forward. I'd like to leave with a quote. I used this in one of the interviews with the city council. I feel blessed, like I got to go to a really special graduate school that trains people to be city managers and county administrators and so on, and as you walk into the main building that was built a long time ago, was dedicated by... I can't remember which president, one of the former... Truman, maybe. Somebody had dedicated it during the... No, I can't remember the timeframe. It was in the thirties or forties. But there's a bronze statue of George Washington in the lobby, and behind it is the Athenian Oath. And here are the words that we would see every day as we'd walk into our classes, and I'll read this, and I hope the employees will listen to it because it really says a lot about what we do in local government. So, the Athenian oath reads as follows. "We will ever strive for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both along and with many. We will unceasingly seek to quicken the sense of public duty. We will revere and obey the city's laws. We will transmit this city not only less, but greater, better, and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." So, in other words, when we leave, whether we're a council member, city manager, or staff, let's be able to reflect back and say, "Hey, the organization's better than I found it." So, that's my objective. However long you'll keep me here, my objective is to make sure it's better than when I started on July first, two thousand and nineteen. So, those are my comments. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, and to the two council members that are staying up in the middle of the night, I'm humbled by that, so thank you.
Thank you. So, you want to all get a picture? Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Wait until our fellow council members are here? I don't really want to hold up a phone for them to be in the photo.
We can do that.
And we are going to have in July opportunities for meet and greets with the community and employees, et cetera. We're just arranging the date and the different events, so that's coming up. We're just arranging the date and the different events, so that's coming up.
If you don't mind, I'd rather all five of us.
Do you mind Scott? Scott will wait. Okay. Well, well, so the next meeting, we'll do a, a picture. But thank you very much. We're real excited to have you and we're just looking forward to us, you know, moving forward with the city. And we, we've had an amazing leadership with Greg and we know that you're going to continue down that path. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going now to, back to item number one. The, which is a, item number one, this is the time and place in here on Fix for a public hearing, a, excuse me, for a continued public hearing from April sixteenth, 2019. Consideration possible action regarding approval of an amendment to environmental assessment number EA 1154, amendment to the specific plan number SP 16-01, amended and restated conditions of approval in a second amendment to development agreement number DA 16-01, amending the requirement that the developer provides six affordable units for low, very low and extremely low qualified households with the residential, residential development to increase the number of affordable units to eight, to allow the eight units to be purchased by qualified, moderate income households. City clerk, was prior notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
City clerk, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Not at this time.
The public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will make the presentation?
Council Sam Lee, our Director of Planning and Building Safety, is going to introduce this item. DR Horton has their team here. They're going to, they're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation. The city has also brought consultants on board that specialize in, in affordable housing issues and those, those folks are here tonight if you have specific questions. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Sam Lee.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor Potem and members of the council. As, as you introduced, this is a item that was continued from our April sixteenth meeting. And at that meeting, council heard a request from DR Horton to amend the, the project's development agreement specifically to change the project's affordable housing obligation. And if, if you recall, it was a request to change from the six units that they have an obligation for today. Those six are in the, in the categories of two extremely low, two very low and two low. And they'd like to switch that obligation to eight, all at moderate levels. After hearing from the applicant and hearing staff's presentation, along with some comments from the public, council instructed the applicant to work with staff to provide some additional information, specifically in the categories of the overall affordable housing selection process and including how the units will be marketed, for how long and where? And, and will there be preferential treatment for military families and so on? DR Horton has prepared a presentation and they're ready to answer all of those questions. As, and as Greg mentioned, there are several people here to answer questions that they may happen today. Notably, our project planner Eduardo is here and our housing consultant from Michael Baker, along with a, a team from DR Horton, including Ms. Cole, who's the manager of the LA Ventura Division.
So Councilman Eduardo Schonborn, Principal Planner, Planning Division. I just want to let you know that one of the things that we've strived to do is work with DR Horton to come up with a program that will be beneficial to the community. We've also teamed up with our affordable housing consultant, DR, which is Michael Baker. They've been doing a lot of work with us. They've also been doing a lot of work in the field of affordable housing, not only here, helping us with this program, but they've also had a lot of experience dealing with affordable housing programs in cities of South, South San Francisco, Dublin. They've also done some affordable housing programs here locally for the city of Beverly Hills. So they've, you know, been very instrumental in, in helping us and, and DR Horton develop a, an affordable housing program that I think will work. And we'll have someone from DR Horton come up and they'll kind of walk you through the whole process. And rest assured that we have tried to vet a lot of these issues to hopefully try to get these things flushed out upfront. And hopefully we can get a, a, a program that you guys will, will, that you all will, will, will support. And, and the whole point of this is to be as transparent as possible, not only to the public, but to, you know, all the citizens that, that may end up applying for, for, for the, for this great opportunity. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to DR Horton.
Good evening. I'm Kelty Cole, City Manager for DR Horton. And this, this is a very important topic for DR Horton as we address the affordable program for our El Segundo project, Waypoint. We're back here tonight as a continuation from April sixteenth. Many hours have been spent with both the city staff and the city's consultant. And we are now addressing council's comments and questions from April sixteenth in relation to affordable housing income limits and sample sales pricing, affordable housing selection process, marketing, timeframe of processing, buyer qualification and verification and preferences for military members. I understand this is a very complicated topic. It's becoming the new norm in all of our cities. And we are hopeful that our presentation tonight has identified points of the program that relate back to your questions from April sixteenth and clarify both for you and for the public and serve as a framework moving forward for any applicants. So if you could please advance the slides. As a recap, I wanted to give you some information on Waypoint. This is a multifamily project. Our homes are two bedrooms, two and a half baths, twelve hundred square feet. They have two-car attached garages, kitchens, living rooms, dining room, two outdoor decks, in-unit laundry, mohawk, tile and carpet, frigid air, appliance packages with very efficient living with dual E glazed windows, energy-efficient tankless water heaters, a solar pre-prom and electric car charging, pre-wire in the garage. So these are not stripped-down units. These are units that we're selling to the public. If you could advance the next slide. This is a basic floor plan. As you can see, you enter in on the first floor with a two, full two-car garage, go up to the second living area with a kitchen and a deck, third floor with a master and secondary bedroom, and up to the fourth floor with a rooftop deck overlooking LAX and El Segundo. If you can advance the next slide. This is a site plan of Waypoint on Imperial Avenue. As you can see in the pink, we've designated these eight units in building two and five. If you can advance the next slide. This is what the exterior would look like. Again, no change, same as what we're selling on the rest of the units. This is the outside elevation of the affordables. And at this time, Mary Ann's going to come in and present the remaining slides.
Hi, Mary Ann Edradico, Division Counsel and Vice President for DR Horton, Southern California. So one of the questions that came up during the last city council hearing was, how do we come up with the affordable sales prices for the eight units? And there's quite a bit of variables that go into calculating that sales price, ranging from household size to basically the income, income household we're looking at. But this is a sample of the affordable sales price at the four different income levels, extremely low income, very low income, low income and moderate. And this is assuming a four-person household, which is probably on the maximum side of sales prices because I believe only if we're maxed out at four-person households for these two-bedroom units. So looking at that, you see the, sort of the max range of sales prices between the four income limits. This is assuming a mortgage interest rate of three point nine five percent and thirty percent of the income allocable to mortgage and your principal and interest. And if you go back, we're looking at a market rate sales pricing of nine hundred and ten You can skip that one. So in terms of calculating affordable sales price, as I mentioned, there's several variables that go into that. But based on what we're looking at with the various income limits, is again, assuming a four-person household, we're looking at basically the allocable portion of the income for housing costs. So at the extremely low, we're looking at seven hundred and eighty-three, very low, one thousand three hundred and five, low at two thousand eighty-eight and moderate at two thousand one ninety-three. And the table right below that shows what are the monthly, anticipated monthly expenses at Waypoint. Typically, that's your HOA dues, your utilities, your property taxes and insurance and basic maintenance and repair. So when you look at that total monthly expense, housing costs, and deduct that from your monthly income, you come up with that last column in the last table of monthly available income for mortgage payment.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When we talk about the monthly expenses at the different levels,
Mm-hmm.
You know, because this is at random, so we could end up with eight extremely low income? Is that going to put that HOA in pro, in like financial issues or have financial problems if they can only pay, I mean, because it looks like at a very extremely low income, they're paying less in monthly expenses to Waypoint? Or is that factored in, the exact same HOA fee for everybody?
It's a uniform HOA due for everybody. We cleared this with the Department of Real Estate. We asked if they could do a modified rate for the affordable units and it's, they won't permit that.
Perfect, thank you.
So here are the steps to homeownership for one of the affordable homes. Step one is we market the homes, allocating about four weeks to that process. Step two is the application submittal stage and we're allocating four weeks for that period of time. Step three is we are pre-qualifying the applicants and I'll go into more details to what that entails. Step four is where the city steps in and verifies what DR Horton has provided in terms of what we have figured out as a, as qualified households. Step five is the actual selection process. And then step six is the loan qualification process for the households that have been selected. And we're allocating thirty days for that process. And then step seven, provided that the buyer makes it all the way through those step, three, six steps before that, they actually get to close on their home.
And I just have a real quick question on step number three, the pre-qualify, pre-qualify in the applicants. So is that the juncture, is that, is that the steps where you're going to be looking at their financials to determine if they qualify in regards to can they afford the home and if they, what bracket they go into?
Yeah, well, I'll go into more detail, but at step three, when we are, it's probably more appropriately called the pre-screen process or the stage, we're going to be looking at the financials at a very high level to see if they can even, if they should even move on to the next step, step four. So we-
When you mean a high level, you mean actually detailed level?
It's, it's going to be based on information that we are provided by the applicant in terms of what their gross income is.
So you won't be like, there won't be, you're just going to go off of like their tax records and stuff like that?
We'll go off a information form that they provide to us regarding their financials.
Okay.
And they could supplement that information and we could do a soft credit check or soft loan application and just see if they, they are even eligible to move on to that next step. But in terms of a deep dive into their financials, that occurs at step six, where we actually go into the loan qualification process.
And if you find that someone at the, at step six didn't really maybe, like maybe weren't as true as they should have been on their application, they would be disqualified?
Correct.
Okay.
Many times, just for you and for the public-
This is Chris Divitow. Can I, can I ask a question? Sorry.
Go.
So, so that I'm clear, nothing on this prevents someone from being in the extremely low income bracket from applying, correct?
That's correct. We, we're not precluding anyone from extremely low, very low or low. This is open to all four income limits or levels. So the critical question is whether a household at extremely low would actually make it past step three, which is our, our screening process or screening stage.
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
So we're not, none of the households at extremely low, very low or low are precluded from applying. The critical question is whether any of those households, especially at the two lowest income limits or levels, would actually be able to qualify when they hit that state, step three, which is our pre-screen stage of, you know, at a superficial level, are they able to actually, would they be able to buy this home with the income that they have available to them and allocable to household expenses, including mortgage and interest?
Thank you.
And Scott, you were going to make a point?
I was just going to add some color to that. Many times people on a rough draft paper qualify and then they go to get a loan and they haven't filed taxes in two years. And so you, they then would not fall, qualify, they would fall out. Or, you know, in a perfect world, somebody would get a new job that would pay them much more money and then they might not qualify. Right?
Right. So there's a lot that could happen regarding their financials, financial status between the time they apply and when they actually are, are at a position to purchase that home. Okay, so step one, we're marketing the homes. And this is going to be a coordinated effort with the city and DR Horton. We're looking at direct marketing to military veterans. And I think we probably want to consider opening that up to active members of the military as well. And there was also a request to figure out how to do targeted marketing at the El Segundo Unified School District locations. Advertisements will include a description of the application period, the mandatory timeframes, eligibility requirements, and then the date for an informative workshop, more, more like an orientation for prospective homeowners as to what the process is. And then we'll specify the date where we're going to actually select at random the various households. Examples of media outlets would be Facebook, the city's website, the developer's website, newspapers, e-blast and print ads. Step two is the application submittals. So as I mentioned, we're going to hold the informative workshop. That will actually trigger that four-week application period. And after the four weeks, the application period closes. Step three, I think we kind of went into this, this is the pre-qualification of applicants. But more appropriately, it's where we actually screen the applicants to see if they can move on to step four. So DR Horton will use its in-house mortgage company, DHI Mortgage, to review all complete applications that were submitted during the application period. To maintain confidentiality, we assign ID numbers to the applications. And DHI Mortgage will pre-qualify the households that satisfy the eligibility requirements. And this pre-qual is really, again, pre-screening based on information provided by the applicants. And to supplement that information, we can have the applicants actually submit sort of a soft loan application to DHI Mortgage based on just a, their provision of information regarding income and household size and, and whatnot. And by no means, again, pre-qual does not mean loan qualification. We're not asking for that level of detail until we get to step six. And we anticipate that the procedures and policies for qualifying or pre-qualifying is that, will be laid out in the affordable housing agreement. Step four, this is where the city verifies whether the applicants meet the definition of a qualified house- Step four, this is where the city verifies whether the applicants meet the definition of a qualified household and whether the home is actually being sold at an affordable sales price. Step five, this is where we select our qualified households. The first step is we create the selection pool, and the second step is the actual selection of the qualified households. So, the selection pools, we're going to actually create two pools of qualified households. The first pool will consist of qualified households that are military veterans and/or, actually, and/or active members of the U.S. military. And then the second pool will consist of qualified households that are other than the military. So, the city's affordable housing consultant, in this case, Michael Baker, will conduct the drawing event at a, at a public event on the date specified, both at the informative workshop and in our advertising materials. Then they'll select at random four IDs from the military veterans pool, and then all remaining IDs in the military veterans pool will be added to the general pool. From that general pool, the, the city's affordable housing consultant will then draw each IDs one at a time from the combined general pool until done or until all IDs are drawn. Then the city's affordable housing consultant will record the IDs, creating a written list in the order that they are drawn. So, some rules we are putting in place to avoid some of the issues that kind of come with this type of program is D.R. Horton will not be permitted to sell any affordable home to a developer or investor, any officer, employee, agent, or consultant of D.R. Horton, or any member of the immediate family of D.R. Horton, or any officer, employee, agent, or consultant of D.R. Horton. Each prospective applicant of an affordable home will sign a conflict of interest self-certification under penalty of perjury to that effect. And then each applicant will also have to certify that they're, they will be using this home as their primary residence.
And on that question, for how long, like on that, using it as their primary residence, are they saying they won't use, do Airbnb or rent for how many years?
Well, the restriction is supposed to stay in place for 20 years.
20 years, okay. So, the people will know that upfront, that they won't be able to rent it, Airbnb, do anything other than live in the home for 20 years?
Correct. Typically, when we, when we put together the purchase and sale package for these homeowners, there is a disclosure regarding the Affordable Housing Program. That information will also be provided at the informative workshop so that each of these prospective buyers know what they're, they're getting into and what they're committing to when they buy one of these homes.
And then if the person then turns around and sells it, those restrictions will stay with the house or the condo until the 20 years is up?
Correct. And that's provided that they actually sell it to another qualified household. If they don't, and they sell the house to a non-qualified household during that 20-year period, then we're looking at a trigger of a default under the resale restriction, and possibly the city stepping in and taking an equity share in whatever equity appreciation was realized on that property.
In your experience, is that the type of thing a title company would allow happen? I mean, this is a deed restriction that's going to go with the property, correct? That would be, that would come up through the sale process through title? I see some nodding heads back there. So, it likely would not happen. Somebody would not be actually able to sell it and get a title insurance policy on it without satisfying that deed restriction. Mark, you agree?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to sell it to another home buyer free and clear of any liens, because this would actually show up as an encumbrance on title?
Got it. I think Chris has something.
Yeah, I have a question. If we are over-selecting from the military to include active duty, if an active-duty military person purchases this and then gets orders somewhere, do we have any capacity to oblige them to sell, or will they have the U.S.O.A. right to keep and lease that property?
I think the city has discretion to create an exemption in hardship cases so that there wouldn't have to be a forced sale of a home in the event that one of the active military members is deployed. So, we have the ability-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. I think my concern is that if we are over-selecting for an active-duty person, we are going to detract or be created a, a investment property because an active-duty person is going to be on orders to mail, they will leave.
Yes, having dealt with affordable housing issues and military programs in the past, it can become an issue if someone gets deployed to another location or, and we try to work with those people, and as the speaker was saying, come up with some hardship ways to deal with it. Would not be able to rent it out for market rate, but could, there are also rental rates for affordable housing. There's not just sales amounts, there are rental amounts, and so we would do our best to work with that person to resolve that issue.
And I think the also-
Yeah, I think we need to be mindful that this is, this could be a significant trap for us. And in order to do good, I think we could be subsidizing someone's retirement.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
He said, he said, "We just have to be careful, because this could be the type of situation that we could find ourselves subsidizing someone's retirement." Meaning, like, an active-duty member renting it out?
I think that's also, we're, we're assuming that this active member is a single-person household, and there's nobody else that will be occupying that unit, whether it be a spouse or a dependent child.
Does that satisfy your question, Chris?
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't satisfy the concern, but I understand the question. I understand the answer to the question, yeah.
Okay. Mark, you said something that triggered another question for me. Before, you had shown the different levels, very low, low, so on and so forth. It's being drawn at random, so we could end up with eight very low or eight moderate. Is that level at which the person qualifies? Is that the level at which the covenant that runs with the property is set? Or somebody who, say, is awarded it and qualifies at very low? In a few years, they need, oh, you know, things change, they're moving to Alabama, and, okay, they want to sell it, but now they want to sell it to a moderate-income family?
It will be, it will be restricted at the level it was purchased.
The level at which it's purchased, okay, just making sure.
Step six is the selection, again. So, developer will notify the first qualified households that they were randomly selected at the event and given an opportunity to purchase one of the homes. All remaining qualified households will be put on a reserve list in the order drawn. Each of those first eight qualified households will have 30 days to obtain final loan approval from a lender, whether that's DHI Mortgage, or it's a third-party lender that's selected by that particular household. If that household fails to obtain loan approval or no longer interested or qualified, then the selection moves on to the next household on that reserve list until we find eight families that qualify and are able to obtain final loan approval. Step seven is the actual homeownership stage, where the buyer, buyer's lender funds the loan. We record the grant deed, and we record the restrictive covenant on that unit. And we could skip that unless, it's just moving on through the process. So, here we are, in terms of Waypoint, we're essentially built out at Waypoint. We've got 34 units, six units are currently owner-occupied, five units are ready to close escrow. We have eight units reserved for affordable housing, and D.R. Horton probably has less than 15 units remaining to sell, but we're about that number. And here's a description of the contributions by D.R. Horton to the City of El Segundo to date. Under the development agreement, D.R. Horton contributed or has contributed, will contribute the following. So, $500,000 paid to the City of El Segundo, $100,000 paid to the city's aquatic fund, $100,000 paid to the, to the El Segundo Little League, $300,000 paid to the city for administering, administering the Affordable Housing Program, and we have also offered another additional $100,000 to add to that $300,000 for administration of the Affordable Housing Program. So, our total contributions to the city is approximately 1.1 million. So, I think with that, I think that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, please let me know.
We'll close some. So, the public hearing is now open for public input, if there's... So, you, does anyone else have, anyone have any questions in the public?
Open public communication, right?
Yeah, open public communications.
Just tell them to step up to the mic and introduce themselves.
Just step up to the mic and introduce yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Stewart, and I am a active-duty dependent. So, my husband is working at L.A. Air Force Base, and I just came here today. I was like, oh, I'll get involved, I'll start going to the city hall meeting, so fun one to join. I just had a couple of questions that I wasn't quite sure upon in some points. The affordable sale prices were based off of a four-person household, but not every person has four people, so will it be adjusted based off of a three-person household? Because that level, according to the California State Department of Household Development, is different for a three versus four. So, I didn't know if that wasn't ever answered very well. And then the other thing in regards to military, which is probably something I have a little bit of more knowledge on, I don't think you guys have to worry about people retiring and using it as something to, as their way to earn money. Most of the people that are going to come and are going to rent are going to be your lieutenants and your captains. That's the majority of the population as far as active-duty military that works on the base. And so, you can look at all that financial information online. It's all public knowledge of how much we receive and how much is the income that we get for actual housing. So, that's just something that you guys need to consider when you go and you're looking at whether military can actually afford it. It's going to be your two primary ones. And so, in general, I would say that it would be interesting if you included the active-duty military in that pool, but you're going to look at, you're going to be lieutenants and captains, and then they're going to move within three to four years. So, then they're going to have to sell it, and then the question about renting and all that, I think, would be something that you would have to include very, a lot of thought into, but then also very upfront, because that is something that we're always concerned about, is I buy a house in a location, and I know in three to four years I'm going to leave. And so, knowing what we can do and what we cannot do, that would be great. Or if you designated this, this is an only active-duty house, we have a lot of other active-duty that we all coordinate with, and we can easily be like, okay, hey, we're leaving. These people, if you want to qual, you know, you want to buy it, please let us know, we have our own little networks. So, I just would say that there was a lot of ambiguity, and so, especially if you're going to do with the military, that's something to be in place, and we also have access to the VA loan, which is 0%. So, when you're coming up with affordable sale prices, that's just something else to consider, is some of us might get less, but we don't need to worry so much about a 3% or 4% mortgage, because we have access to be able to use the VA loan, which allows us to get a 0% as long as we live in that residence for two years. Let's see. So, those are the, the main comments that I had, and I really appreciate that the, El Segundo takes a lot of pride in making sure that we have a lot of opportunities for our military folk, and thank you for all that you guys do for all the military, and we appreciate that you consider that as far as veterans and active-duty goes to help support us, because I know when we got chosen to move here, we're like, okay, that's a lot of money for housing. I came from Ohio, it was like 1,200, and I'm looking at places, I'm like, oh, that's like 4,000. So, we do get a little bit more money when we move, but still, it's, it's a little daunting when anything close to the base especially is almost unaffordable. So, we appreciate that you guys take into consideration that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelsey. Anyone else for public hearing? Okay, so we'll close, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, moved.
Second.
All right, so we're opening up for council discussion.
I think they're still here.
Yeah. So, I just have one question in regards to presentation. We had the, when on our discussion in April, it was really the-
Vote to close. We need to vote to close.
We didn't vote to close the-
Oh, sorry.
At first, and second.
Can we have a vote to close the?
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Aye.
Councilmember Bran?
Aye.
Mayor Postemper-
Aye, that's her.
Mayor Postemper stuck.
Aye.
Mayor Boils?
There was a time delay, my apologies.
So, you say aye.
Say aye, Drew, if that's your vote.
I thought I did, sorry.
All right.
Five-oh.
All right. Okay, council discussion. So, my question is, back in April, one of the biggest discussion points we had was around the number of units and the, the levels, and I know that we were asking to find out what the delta would be by changing the number and in whose favor, and I just wanted to, that wasn't addressed in this presentation.
Yeah, the, the conversation has shifted a bit. What the applicant is asking is to increase the number of units that are restricted from six to eight to allow the moderate-level families to compete in this, this random process. So, and, and somebody asked the question of the applicant, I think it was Councilmember Pimentel, extremely low, very low, low, and moderate, under this proposal are going to be able to compete for this random process. So, we don't know who's going to win that, that lottery, whether they're going to be eight moderates or eight extremely lows. It's probably going to be some combination. So, it is hard to, I think, project what the difference is in what the applicant is going to earn based on the sales price. We have, I think Sam developed sort of the highest earning, if all eight are moderate, and our difference was about $800,000 from the current condition of approval. So, that's the, I think, the best case as far as an earnings on behalf, on D.R. Horton's part, if all eight went to moderate. We don't think that's going to happen, it's probably going to be some combination of moderate and low, and maybe very low and extremely low if they can get through the, the screening process and be selected. So, the number has changed, it's changed from six to eight, and the applicant is asking to include moderate in the, the process for selection.
What is the city's target goal for providing affordable housing? Is it 69?
I think 69 was the total production goal during the housing element cycle. And of those, do we know the breakdown? Eduardo, do you have it? So, we'll, we'll report back in one minute on how the 69 broke down from market to the different affordable categories.
And I think staff said before that of the 69, that's a target that we've achieved zero. We have none.
No, no, no. We've, we've produced, I think, a significant amount of housing during this cycle, particularly with the ADUs. As far as income restricted, where there is a regulatory mandate to control the rent or the sales price, these are the only ones that we've, we've done during that, that cycle.
But understanding that some of the ADUs could have fallen into that, because a lot of people that came asking to build ADUs really wanted to buy them, build them for their relatives or their mother-in-laws?
Yeah, so at the, at the end of this housing element cycle, we're going to have to report to the state, the HCD, on our success in meeting the 69 quota. And we intend to make an argument that some of the ADUs should have been, meet that affordable, that affordable category, and we have, even though they're not income restricted by the city, that we have seen some production of affordable housing as a result of those ADUs being built.
Is there a way for us to reach out to those people that have built the ADUs or who are building the ADUs to get their confirmation on if they were for restricted, for low income?
You know, maybe our housing specialist can speak to this, but what I'm used to is when you prepare the housing element update, you look at what the rents are, you actually look at the, the real estate flyers and see what, what units are renting for, and then you use that actual market condition to start establishing what you believe those units that were built are being rented for.
And so, if we can't establish there's any other units than these eight, we're going to be about 87% below goal. How are we going to get the other 87%?
So, sir, let me back up one minute. Our, our allocation for this housing element cycle, which was 2013 through 2021, consisted of 18 very low, 11 low, 12 moderate, and 28 above moderate or market rate for a total of 69. And I believe the HCD will, we're going to do our best to justify that we produced adequate housing. We're going to do our best to justify that we produced adequate housing and that some of those units are de facto affordable. I believe what HCD does is if, for those that you didn't produce, they roll them into your obligation for the next cycle. Because I don't think you get out of the obligation. You are committed to a certain number and it keeps accumulating. So we will have a challenge. You're right. We will have a challenge in this cycle in showing that we complied and will have potentially a bigger challenge in the next cycle, showing that we complied. One of the reasons why staff supports the applicant's proposal is we're at least getting those eight moderate. And we're going to be able to show HCD that we have eight regulated for 20 years moderate income units that we can point at as the City of El Segundo's contribution to this state requirement and this regional objective.
I had a question on... It's for you, Eduardo, I believe, but it's on their presentation. Said $500,000 paid to the City of El Segundo, $100,000 paid to the Aquatic Fund, $100,000 paid to the Little League. That $500,000 paid to the city, is that... What is that exactly? Are those fees that we collected?
It was just part of the transaction. It went into our general fund and we used it for general city expenses.
Okay, so if I recall, just so we paint a very clear public picture, those monies came in after DR Horton came back and asked for some changes to the plan, correct? The setback from the street was made, I think, 21 feet or 20 feet versus 22 feet.
Streets got a little smaller, which made the lots a little bigger.
So those were some fees that transacted in regards to the city changing the entitlements, correct?
The request from DR Horton for the city to change the requirements, I think the city saw that DR Horton was getting value out of each of those requests and asked to, for a community benefit as a result of that decision.
Got it. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Shall we discuss or ask questions?
Yeah, whichever. Any questions, Don?
No more questions, really. I've just been pretty clear over the last few months that this whole transaction doesn't make any sense to me. It's not going to help us really achieve the number we're expected to. I think it makes more sense to accept DR Horton's offer of over $3.3 million in lieu fees and then have the flexibility to do with that funding what we want to. So this other sets up a system that's very complicated, as we've seen, and we're going to have to pay somebody to monitor it for the next two decades. So I'm for the in lieu and not this rigmarole.
Well, I believe the $300,000 here paid to the city for administering the Affordable Housing Program. That breaks down, it's like $15,000 a year for the 20 years or something, isn't it, is it not? So it's not dollars that we will take out of our general fund. It's actually being fronted by DR Horton to cover the cost of that program. I disagree with you, Don, on that point that we're not doing anything. I fear that Sacramento is coming after cities that are doing nothing. And I think if anything, this is us doing something. I think it's defendable with the Housing Department there. And as much as I do agree with your point that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because eight people are going to win the lottery per se. And maybe it would have been better if it was affordable rentals versus for sale units. But as they say, we learn from our mistakes potentially and this could be a mistake or it could be a really good thing. So I'm glad we're getting eight versus six. I'm glad we got the numbers from DR Horton in regards to the potential windfall of, you know, it's not millions of dollars that you could potentially be making more if we allow the different levels. I like the idea that it's not just very low, that it's opened up to the entire spectrum. I feel like we'll get a lot more applicants that way and it actually... At those different levels, it may allow people who currently live in El Segundo to apply and qualify. So from that aspect, I think it's a good thing. And I think we heard from our community that there are people in this community that will qualify. And, you know, they're interested in this. There's no guarantee that they're going to be the ones that win this lottery. And I'm really curious as to what room is going to house all of these applicants on this lottery day and who from staff is going to be there to handle this. But, because that could be a very exciting day. I'm happy with how it's presented. I think staff has worked very, very hard on this. This has been a long time coming and I think it's time that we make a decision and move on.
All right, Scott or Drew, any comments?
Chris.
Chris, sorry. Chris and Drew, any comments?
Yeah, this is Drew. I think to Dan's point, I think the $3.3 million, call it in lieu for lack of a better term, opportunity was available earlier on. I got the sense that wasn't available. I was also intrigued by the notion of creating additional senior housing, which we coincidentally just identified as one of our strategic priorities for next year in last week's strategic planning session. But I think that those are going to be significant undertakings and I would like to see movement here. I do like that this addresses at least eight families in town. I do like that it addresses different affordability indexes. I still feel a little bit like there's more for DR Horton to give when I look at what the original obligation was versus the market value increase that they're going to get from these increased valuations. But I can live with this as a stance. Thank you.
Chris, any comments?
Yeah, I would like to say in the foremost, I agree with Dr. Brand that this is going to be an undertaking of undue complexity. And I think had we a time machine, we would radically rethink the approach that we have taken. In general, I think that it is, all of that notwithstanding, it is a program we're undertaking on elated that we are able to include more applicants without precluding some of the original pool. People have an opportunity to qualify. I do not want us to underestimate the issue with creating rental property. And by over-selecting for active duty, and I'm no secretive in fact, but I am very sympathetic and empathetic to the life of an active duty serviceman. But we are in effect creating a rental property, which is precisely what we do not want there. When we over-select for an active duty person who will have the ability to maintain that property, we will not want to, nor will we be able to likely force the sale, although I defer to the city attorney on that. And as a result, that will be a rental property if we over-select for active duty military. So I think we really, if we are going to move ahead, if we want to make that a veteran pool, great. If we want to just put them in general population, that's also good. The intent of this, it's great to serve veterans, obviously. It's wonderful to create opportunities for homeownership generally. But we do run the risk of creating rental properties if we over-select for active duty military. So I would say I would support this, but with that caveat, I think I would like to see that modified. Unless, city attorney, if I'm being hysterical and we actually can preclude or enforce a sale, no one like to see hazardous terms, but if we can force a sale based on that, based on someone having orders, I just don't believe that either under the old Civil Relief Act or the current SARA law that we can do that.
I think I understood your question and no, we could not force a sale. And actually, I've seen situations where when the market drops and the person gets reassigned to another location, they could actually be forced to take a loss on the property that they can't really afford. And so we can't force a sale. And under state law, it's really not possible to force a sale based upon those circumstances. So you may very well be correct that we may end up in situations where they get rented out at whatever affordability index they were sold at. And as part of the dollars that are being provided to DR Horton to monitor this, part of that would have to go to overseeing that. Now, I think the other point that Councilmember Pimentel made was that, if I understood it correctly, was that you could... And you can't prevent active military from participating in the program, but you don't have to necessarily create a separate pool for them. That's a policy decision.
I don't think what's proposed creates a separate pool for active. It's just saying that we're shrinking the pool of, hey, anyone with military, we're going to pull four names from you and then all rest are going to go into the main pool, get mixed up and then four more are drawn.
Yes, that's what I understood and I don't think I articulated myself well then or I confused you. But, no, that's what I understood. And that you don't have to set those four aside if you don't want to and you could just have the active military participate like anybody else.
Okay, so at this juncture, we'll take a vote. I mean, my comments are that I... I feel Dr. Brand's comments are very valid. However, we do have the State of California breathing down our neck, pushing some rules and regulations about affordable housing, even though we all sit up here and know that they're going to be complicated and convoluted and hard to administer. That's what the State of California wants and so we really have to adhere to the guidelines that they're pushing down toward us. So let's take a call on a vote.
There is a resolution and an ordinance this evening and so I will read the resolution. It's a resolution approving amendments to the conditions of approval for environmental assessment number EA 1154, the 540 East Imperial Specific Plan and a second amendment to the development agreement. And that is ready for a motion and second and then a roll call vote.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Second.
The second from France. Votes are still coming in from Florida.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Question, so it understood because it came in a bit muffled. There's no modification to the pool of military. Obviously, we can't preclude them for participating, but there's nothing that changes that overrepresented pool, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
I don't know.
What'd he say?
He says no.
No. Councilmember Brand?
No.
Mayor Protemp Percy?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Passes three-two.
Next, and this is just for introduction this evening. And if it's introduced, it will be brought back at... Well, either if the council, depending on your action later of whether you cancel the July 2nd meeting, it will be brought back at July 2nd unless that meeting is canceled, in which case it will be brought back on July 16th. An ordinance approving and adopting an amendment to the 540 East Imperial Avenue Specific Plan and a second amendment to development agreement number 16-01 to amend the affordable housing requirement to provide for eight affordable units for qualified, moderate income households within the residential development is ready for introduction. Just one of you needs to introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
So this will again be brought back at either the second... Or your next regular meeting, which will either be July 2nd or July 16th.
Okay, so now we're moving on to unfinished business.
No unfinished business, no reports from committees, commissions and boards.
So new business. All right, so number two. Consideration and possible action regarding the city council to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018. Fiscal impact zero. City manager, who is going to do the presentation?
Mayor members of council, Joe Lilio, our director of finance, will introduce this item. But I think the majority of the report is going to be provided by Kenneth Poon, who is with our audit firm.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, city council members. Tonight I have the fiscal year 2017-18 comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR, for you to receive and file. Just a little bit of background. So this is my third year here with the city, the fourth CAFR presenting to the city council. The first CAFR I presented back in, was CAFR for fiscal year 14-15. There were 18 findings. I committed to council then that we would be proactive at reducing those findings and diligent at addressing them. So finance staff has taken that seriously and we've reduced those findings each year. The CAFR before you tonight, 17-18 CAFR, only has two findings. So I think it's a great accomplishment to my finance staff and we'll continue to address those issues moving forward. And hopefully we can have zero findings in the following year. So there is a gentleman here, Ken Poon, from the city's audit firm, the Poon Group, that will be making a brief presentation.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, mayor, member of the city council. Again, my name is Ken Poon. I'm the engagement partner of the audit of the City of El Segundo for the fiscal year end September 30th, 2018. Just a little bit background about the Poon Group. This year is our first year of the audit for the City of El Segundo. The Poon Group is a statewide firm focusing mainly in the state local government audit. Couple of the significant engagement that we perform the audit on, including City of Stockton, City of San Bernardino during the bankruptcy time. And currently we are servicing about like 40 cities and 40 different special district. And I myself is the engagement partner for this particular audit and has ultimate responsible to oversee the audit and making sure that the audit is performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standard. So a couple of things, what we like to go through. I know the CAFRs, the comprehensive annual financial report is almost like 200 pages long. So what I would like to do is actually following the auditing standard, going through a couple required communications with you guys, kind of go through a brief overview of your financial condition for the whole entire fiscal year. We'll pull out some pension and other post-employment benefit information about, for this fiscal year. Get through some audit results and provide you the audit findings that we noted during our audit. So the scope of work. We were engaged by the city to perform the audit for the fiscal year end September 30th, 2018. Couple required communications. Basically, I would like to take this opportunity to go through some audit responsibility, because we are the audit firm and city management is fully responsible for these financial statements. By presenting these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle in the United States of America. So the City of El Segundo is part of state local government. The governmental standard, accounting standard board is the standard setting bodies for state local government, which the city is actually following those accounting principles to, for all of your accounting treatment in the, for the city. You need to adopt sound accounting policy. Very importantly, you're required to establish and maintain proper internal control over financial reporting, provide evidence supporting to the amount and the disclosure in the financial statement. And last but not least, you do need to have programs to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibility as the auditor, we are here to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standard, but also by contract. We are performing the audit at one more layer is the government auditing standard, which is a more tightened auditing standard that we need to follow. We also need to communicate with those charged with governance. That's why I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you may have for this audit. We're here to assess the audit risk of material misstatement. We determine the fairness presentation of the financial statement. And last but not least is to render our audit opinion on your financial statement. So let's get into the numbers. So the government, the whole entire CAFRs, the financial sections basically breaking into two parts. The government-wide financial statement is the consolidated level of the city. So basically, as you can see in this slides, this is the consolidated level of your balance sheet as of September 30th of 2018. As you can tell, at the end of the fiscal year, the city ended with a total net position of about like $13.5 million. Break it down between the governmental activities, which is your majority of your governmental funds, your general funds, special revenue funds, capital project funds. Those are all included in your... your general funds, special revenue funds, uh, capital project funds, those are all included in your governmental activities. At the end of the, um, fiscal year, you ended with about like $27.7 million deficit for your governmental activities, and compared to your business-type activities, which include your water fund, your sewer fund, and your, um, golf course fund, uh, end up you have a $41 million surplus. Um, so one thing that I would like to point it out, uh, about your deficit, the $27 million deficit is actually breaking, breaking up into three different pieces. The first piece is net investment in capital asset, which is, um, your, uh, infrastructure asset, your street and roads, all your buildings are included in this number, net of all your capital lease outstanding. So, at the end of the year, you have about like $93.7 million. The restricted part is either restricted by enabling legislation or by third party, which is your grantor, uh, grantor, uh, which is about like $7.9 million. The unrestricted, which is about like a negative $129 million, which is a, a big deficit. But keep that in mind, back in, um, back about like three years ago, the city is required to go through the implementation of the new GASP statement number 68, the pension standard. And then also for this fiscal year, uh, you also need to adopt the, uh, the standard for other post-employment benefit liabilities. So, that's mean your financial statement as of this, um, as, uh, for this fiscal year is full accrual basis. So, all the liabilities are recorded in these financial statements. So, that's why after recording the, um, net pension liabilities and the, uh, uh, the total OPEB liabilities on the face of a financial statement, that is the, 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 one of the ju- uh, big factor that's, uh, affecting your unrestricted net position into a deficit position. And then I'll have a, a, a more, uh, detailed slides talking about the pension plan later, so you can ex- uh, tell exactly why the unrestricted, uh, position, net position is in, in the, um, in the deficit, um, position. So, the next slide here is the consolidated level of your income statement. So, um, the total expenses, um, $115 million, net of the program revenue that you, you can charge the user for fee, um, or you can actually get the grants to cover your program. So, uh, total about like $45.7 million. The net cost of service is coming down to $69 million, which is majority covered by your, um, property, like all your taxes, um, earned during the year, your investment earnings of about like $67 million. There's no transfer between the governmental activities and the business-type activities. So, at the end of the day, um, you have a, um, deficit of, uh, operating deficit of about like $2 million. One of the big contribution to this number is really the, uh, the, um, the, um, employer contribution to the pension plan. As you may recall, um, a couple years ago, um, CalPERS already addressing the, uh, the, uh, shortfall on their, in their investment portfolio, and has dropped the, um, discount rate from 7.65% to 7.15%. What does that mean to the city? That's mean the employers need to contribute more to make up the difference. And that is one of the reason why the pension expense has gone up quite a bit, and that's caused your operating deficit for the current fiscal year. The general fund is a main operating fund for the city, so total, um, so I have a two-years comparison. So, at the end of the, uh, year, um, September 30th, two, 2018 compared to 2017, uh, there's a $5.2 million increase in your fund balance for, for the general fund. So, last year, 2017, you ended with $28.6 million. And then the total fund balance for, uh, 2018 ended with close to $34 million. So, um, one other thing that we always look at is the rainy, uh, the, um, reserve fund, which is what I call the rainy days fund. So, comparing your unrestricted funds, which include the, uh, the assigned and unassigned fund balance, uh, compared to the total annual expenditure for the general fund, uh, which is representing, uh, in this slides, is 39%, and in 2017, 33%, which is a really, really great ratio. Um, GFOA best practice, um, they, they actually, um, have a recommendation of two months of expenditure, which is equal to 16.67%, but now you are, uh, more than double of the, uh, recommended, uh, best practice. So, uh, I'm happy to see that this is a 39% as of this point for your general fund. So, I'm happy, um, um, this is a, a big, uh, plus for the city to deal with the future uncertainty. So, let's take a look at the income statement. So, uh, total revenue, $75.9 million, let, less all the expenditure, $67 million. So, and then also the other financing sources. You're actually, the general fund needs to subsidize some other program, so transfer out about like $3.2 million. So, at the end of the day, the, um, the, the general fund still have a big increase of about like $5.2 million, which is, uh, approximately, um, the, the, the same, um, uh, operating resource compared to 2017. So, it's not a big variances between the two years. Um, the pension and other post-employment benefit is a really hot topics in the state local government industry. So, that's why I would like to pull that. Um, keep that in mind, the pension liabilities and the other post-employment benefits are all estimate, uh, in these financial statements. So, it's really based out of the assumption made, uh, the, the discount rate, uh, this being used by the actuary. The discount rate is also at the same time based on the learned, long-term expected rate of return or, uh, from your planned, uh, investment. So, CalPERS, um, this year actually dropped the discount rate from 7.65 to 7.15. So, uh, as you can tell, um, the 7.15, when you record it in the financial statement, is close to $139 million, which is approximately equals to your, uh, unrestricted deficit on your, in your governmental activity. So, that's why I, what I said, the majority reason that's pull the unrestricted, uh, deficit in your, um, um, in your financial statement is that the main driving force is the pension liability, your biggest, uh, liability on the, on the face of financial, financial statement. So, um, given the fact that CalPERS, the investment portfolio is all fluctuated, and, um, and kinda give, give the, uh, the reader a sense of what's go- going on. If, what if the investment portfolio didn't meet the 7% and needs to drop it down by 1% to 6.15? Your liability can goes up to $290 million. Uh, but the other way around, what if the, uh, investment portfolio can make 8% long-term expected rate of return? Your dis- um, your liability can drop it down to $81 million. So, as of this point, um, the last measurement date, which is June 30, 2018, um, the funded status for your miscellaneous plan is 72%, uh, which is above, uh, based on my, my, um, my observation, you are right at the average level on funded ratio. And the safety plan is about 62, to, in my opinion, it's a little lower than average. So, some of the, um, the city may needs to take a closer look at your safety plan, and hopefully, one day, you can actually boost it up your funded ratio in your, for your safety plan to, uh, what I call the, uh, average in, in the, in the industry, which I, I usually use a 75%, um, uh, funded status as the benchmark. Um, the city also do have a, um, frozen plan, uh, with pars, uh, for your, um, for your, um, supervisory level employees. So, at the end of the day, um, the liability rated at 5.5% discount rate, it's 1.1, um, 1.1 million dollars. Uh, and also giving the, um, the, the city a flavor of what if the discount rate changed by plus one or minus 1%? Uh, it can goes up to 1.4 million dollars for if the discount rate dropped by 1%. Or if the discount rate dr- uh, increased 1%, it can drop to $870,000. So, the current funded, funded ratio is about like $48,000. But given the fact that this is a really, really small plan, so $1 million may not necess- like, it's not, um, I would not compare it to CalPERS. CalPERS is really your, your biggest, um, challenge in, um, in, uh, funding the, uh, funding the, uh, the CalPERS plan. So, the next item is other post-employment benefits. So, uh, for the fiscal year end, September 30th, 2018, this is your first year implementing the, uh, the other post-employment benefit plan. Uh, recording similar to the pension plan, you need to record the, uh, the, um, full li- the, the full liability, for your, um, other post-employment benefit liability. So, at the end of the day, um, your actuary has determined to use a 6, 6.75%, which is, uh, approximately equals to $41 million reported on your face of a financial statement. So, same thing, your discount rate change, uh, if the discount rate dropped by 1%, the, um, your liabilities can go up to $48 million. And then if the discount rate can, like, going up to 7.75%, um, your liability can drop it down to $34 million. But also giving you the healthcare cost, uh, the, uh, the healthcare costs, 'cause as you know, the healthcare, uh, tra- cost is being fluctuate and constantly increasing in the last couple of years. So, if the rate has changed, um, also impact your liabilities too. So, um, those are the, uh, the information that you may also need to consider when evaluate, evaluating the, uh, healthcare costs, um, in your, in, for your health plans. So, the other results. We are happy, we are happy to issue an unmodified opinions for all opinions unit that we, we looked at, which state that these financial statements are fairly present in all material respect. Significant accounting policy have been consistently applied. All the estimates are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in these financial statement. Uh, we do not have any disagreement with management in terms of any accounting treatment that we, we saw in the, during our audit. Uh, we did, were not also, I, like, we did not identify any consultant being used, uh, by the city on consulting any accounting treatment. So, uh, as, um, Joe actually said, um, this year, we identified, um, two, uh, internal control issue. One is regarding the accounting manual. I would say this is a policy and procedures manual. This is definitely a guiding principle for the city and your staff to follow. So, that's why we highly recommend, um, the, the city to consider this as a high priority, to come up with a accounting manual so that your, um, employees have a guiding principle to follow. Um, the 2018 dash, uh, OO2, which regarding the internal control of procurement and cash disbursement process, um, this is a, um, a continuing, um, um, deficiency that were noted from your previous audit. It's nothing new to the city. Uh, there are some separation of duties issued in your procurement and cash disbursement process. So, we, we basically detail out all the information to your finance team. Uh, and hopefully, uh, by our next audit, um, these, um, cont- um, control deficiency are being addressed uh, during our next audit. So, that's conclude my presentation tonight, and I would like to also take this opportunity to thank you all your staff. I know it's a, we are new audit firm, first year is always tough to, to get the audits complete with new accounting principle being implemented. Uh, we really, really appreciate all the efforts coming from, from your finance team. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, um, does anyone have any, does anyone have any questions? I do wanna thank you very much, um, in regard to the two items that you found out, that, that you identified. We did talk about them in our strategic planning meeting, so I know that Joe has really, um, taken that to heart and is, will be looking at that. The one, um, the second, which one about the internal control, um, is, I, I'd like to make sure we talk to Charles about somehow automating that process as far as the, a process flow through automation on approval so that we can capture those discrepancies earlier, or identify them quickly. So people, 'cause I think what's happened is people don't realize that they're, they're not following the policy. And so, if we could put some controls around it via, via automation, that'd be great.
Absolutely, and that's, uh, one of the areas we're looking at. Um, so we do have the purchase order requisition module that will be fully automated here, uh, within the next couple of months. We've ruled it out with the smaller departments, um, so that's, uh, my department, city manager, some of the other small departments are already automated with the PO's process. Um, and then the next step would be look at automating the approval process for invoices.
Very good. But this is really a testament, um, to you, Joe, and your team. Thank you very much for really doing a great job on the fin- on our finances, 'cause it really shows in that our audit is so clean, and I just really, just these two highlighted items is pretty, pretty good. And I'm just really thankful for you and your team. Any comments from the other councilmembers? Chris or Scott, or Chris or Drew, any comments on the audit?
Well, great, great improvement over the past couple of years, Joe.
Thank you, mayor.
So, we're just gonna receive and file? Okay.
Thank you, council.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Any polls?
You guys have any polls from the consent agenda?
I do not. Absolutely not.
Um... I did wanna, I think we should poll number eight, just to have, I like, just to talk about that quickly. Number eight.
All right, Carol's pulling the eight.
So I'm gonna pull number eight. All right, so let's, uh, take a vote.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call. So this for item number four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, and 11.
Councilmember Nicol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Aye.
Councilmember Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Protemperstec?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Aye.
Okay, I pulled number eight, consideration possi-
Past 5-0, sorry.
Oh, sorry, past 5-0, sorry. I, um, pulled number eight, consideration possible action to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with Lanyard Group LLC to provide hardware, software, and professional services to implement the storage area network and blade systems. Fiscal impact, $822,040, $240, uh, for fiscal FY19 and '20. Charles, would you like to just give us a brief, um, outline of what this represents and why this isn't so important?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Good evening, everyone, first of all. Um, effectively, this operates as the engine that actually runs the technology city, right? Um, this effectively will replace and update about 600 desktops that we're currently using. Um, it would also update, if you will, the engine that runs some of our major applications, ERP, um, as well as, as well as our, uh, Laserfish systems, right? Uh, many, many of the infrastructure, much of the infrastructure that we're using today is well over eight years old. And, and looking at that assessment in terms of, uh, in terms of the upgrade of the actual system, I just thought it was very important, um, that we upgrade this as soon as possible. We previously have been talking about this, but we were working with the tech committee just to make sure that we're all in alignment with respect to this upgrade, and I believe that we are. One of the things that I'd like to say is that we did take a look at moving items to what people call the cloud. Comparatively speaking, um, it would cost about $1.7 million more if we were to move these very same items to the cloud. We did some extensive analysis, um, with respect to AWS, which is Amazon Web Services, looking at that as a cloud service. Uh, other than that, I, I'll be more than happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
And just for cl- um, just for reiteration, so as we are implementing new systems, like the planning system, we'll be moving to the cloud on those functionalities. So, um, we can't really move to the cloud until all of our systems are ready to be moved to the cloud.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would say yes to that. It, it may sound like a qualify yes, but here's why. Um, it, it's, when we use software as a service, we're buying that actual software. So someone else is managing it. This particular system will effectively allow us to straddle one foot in the cloud and one foot on premise. So, we will be able to manage cloud applications. We'll be able to potentially, um, depending on the cost, use the cloud as disaster recovery to store our data there while still having services, what we call, on, on premise.
And then some of this data, there's some of this purchases is really required for us to really- for us to really move forward with some of the system implementations we want to also move forward with, correct?
Yes, I would say from a data standpoint, we, we have a lot of data. And it's going to take us some time to, to, to mine that data, if you will, clean it up, understand what's important to us and how we want to use it. So, as, you know, we move through time, as I said before, I think cloud services will, will decrease in price. And then my intent is to decrease the, the amount of data that we actually have on, in-house. Because I'm sure we have, as you know, I'm sure we have a lot of duplicate data. So, to put that in the cloud and pay twice, three, four, or five times for it is probably not the best use of our money.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to move, make motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
All in favor, a roll call?
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Aye.
Councilmember Bran?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Protemperstuck?
Aye.
Mayor Boils?
Aye.
All right. Past 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we lost someone.
Are both you guys still there?
They're still here.
Drew, you there?
I think we lost him.
I think we lost him.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. I will message him. Yep, he said, "We just lost you." Okay, I'm going to call him. Sound good? Is that okay, Mayor? Or sorry, he said he had trouble calling in before. Can I just set him right here? So long as it works, unless he died.
All right, you're back on.
All right, reports. City Manager.
Mayor, members of council, I did want to thank all of our employees who will be working for us on the Fourth of July, making sure that we have a safe and enjoyable holiday. This is my last council meeting, so I did want to take the opportunity to not give a speech, but just thank some people. And I wanted to start with my, actually, my nieces are in the audience and it's getting close to their bedtime, but they've sat very patiently for the last couple of hours. Beau and Dallas Carpenter. Can you guys raise, wave your hands? Yeah. I think they came to support me on my last meeting. My brother Brian is here and my sister, sister-in-law Carrie Carpenter, whose father, actually, Tom was a retiree from the city as well, Tom Curtis. So, thank you very much for coming, guys. I guess while I'm thanking my family, I should thank my parents for, for putting their money together and moving to El Segundo in 1962 and buying a house next to a runway and a Hyperion, which, you know, we probably questioned their judgment at the time, but it was a great decision. And I am truly grateful, thankful that they allowed me to grow up in this, this great town. I think I owe thanks to El Segundo Unified, they did their best with me to be a student and an athlete. And, you know, they, they held up their end of the deal and I didn't quite hold up mine, but I, I appreciate that. Thirty-three years of public service, working with a lot of really dedicated public servants, mentors, examples for me. City employees, for the most part, 98% come to work every day to make their cities better. And they don't get a lot of appreciation or recognition, but, but they really do come to work to build communities, make people safe, make cities better. And I've worked with some great people. I want to thank the council and past councils, Tracy, Krista. You guys have thankless jobs and the public. It probably looks a lot better and more interesting than it actually is. Well, it's interesting, but, but it is a hard job. And people don't recognize you for, for the work you do. I should, I should thank the council back in 2012 that asked me to take this job. I think honestly, they had more faith in me than I had myself. But, but they asked me to do the job. Somebody needed to step up and do it. I wasn't sure that I could, but, but it was extremely, extremely humbling to be asked. And here we are. You know, great mayors that I've worked with along the way. Eric was, was the mayor at that time. Just, I think of Eric as, as really a diplomat and a gentleman. Carl, Carl's in the back, Carl Jacobson. I was actually afraid of Carl. You know, he kind of has this, this gruff persona and, and you think he's going to be very difficult to, to work for. I would say, and this will probably embarrass Carl, but behind closed doors, Carl is absolutely the most supportive, kindest man and best boss I think I've ever had. And obviously, he has a wealth of information about this city. Bill was next. Bill I always saw as an optimist. Bill, Bill believed in, in the city and that, that we could do anything. Suzanne followed, followed Bill. Suzanne absolutely is completely dedicated to the city. She's probably watching, because I think she watches the meetings from, from Idaho. So, she's probably watching right now. Suzanne Fuentes, I was, served with, with her, I think, for the longest, for four years and a great supporter of mine, but absolutely, you know, I kind of describe Suzanne as tough love. She would, she would support staff, support me in public. But when we got behind closed doors, she would absolutely tell me what, what her expectations were or where we, she thought we could do better. And I always appreciated that in her. And Drew, you know, Drew's the disruptor, Drew's the "we can do anything" guy. And it's, it's a little daunting at first, but, but I think we've, myself and staff have gotten used to that. And, you know, you, you can certainly try everything and push yourself, push your limits. And Drew's very good at that. So, I wanted to thank all of you for, for what you do, what you've done for me. We have great city employees here. I talked about sort of the, the privilege of working with people throughout my career, but we have about 300 employees here, 250 full-time employees that do an amazing job for us. And I appreciate everything they do as both the city manager and as a resident. And again, if you see a city employee on the street, regardless of the department, please thank them for what they do for, for the city. The department heads, I think we have an excellent executive team. I think that, that Scott, who spoke earlier, is truly lucky for this group of department heads that he's getting. They are absolutely all in for the city and for him, and they will make him successful. And they're, you know, they, they really have bonded as a group. They're very close to each other. You know, I, I see them as sort of a second family of mine and they are absolutely brothers and sisters of each other. So, I thank them for their commitment to the city and to me. And then finally, I wanted to close with my, my direct family. My sons, who are both out of town, absolutely keep my sense of humor. They, they, they keep me humble and they are better men than I will ever be, which is all a father can ever ask for. And then finally, my wife. The most unappreciated, underpaid job in the city is being the city manager's wife. It really is. She didn't ask for it. She has to put up with, with me and what I bring home. I don't think I've ever shared with you guys that my wife's actually a very accomplished professional. She's a human resources vice president for a Fortune 500 company and has been a great wealth of knowledge and support for me professionally, but also, you know, obviously, she's been very supportive of me. Unconditional love and support from my wife. She's just a great person. She's been my girlfriend for 37 years. My wife for 33, 31 years. Julie is, is actually out of town on travel tonight or else she'd probably be here. But I did want to publicly thank her and I did forget one person, Mark. Mark and I have a great relationship. City manager, city attorney relationships, interesting. But we, we both want to do what's best for the city. Mark has been, has been a great source of information for me. We have fascinating phone calls and deal with fascinating issues. And just when I think I'm going to call Mark with something he's never heard before or blow his mind or there's some strange thing that we need to resolve, he absolutely deals with it professionally. He's completely unflappable and professional and is a great city attorney for the city. So, with that, I can just say that I feel truly privileged and thankful for this opportunity that I've had. I appreciate everything I've, I have, that I have, what we've accomplished as a team. And I know that the city will be successful going forward and you all have my best wishes. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Greg. Yes, they're clapping all around the world. At this point, I think we have a little video we would like to share with you.
Don't judge the videography on some of them.
So, Greg's retiring. Yeah, if I were him, I'd want to get out of this place. I mean, look what he's done with this office. What a heap. It's a mess. I can't believe it. So, what should we say about him retiring? Well, we can say we hired him and take the credit. Damn straight. But you know, Greg has done a great job. He has. No, 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 we don't say that. Why not? Well, we don't want the people to think that the city manager and the staff are the ones that get everything done. Where does that leave the council and the mayors? Ah, true, true. You know, although we know better and the council sets the direction, the reality is Greg and the staff get everything done. That's true. It, it's amazing. They, they have, when you think about what Greg has done over his tenure as city manager, it is truly amazing. Yeah, the list is long. So, you think we should mention that? Nah. Hey, wait a minute, what's that? Is that a camera? Are we on camera? Congratulations, Greg, on a job well done. Congratulations, Greg. Enjoy. Greg, I just want to wish you a happy retirement here from Nicaragua. While I haven't worked with you that long, maybe four years now, it's been an absolute pleasure and I wish you the best. And I look forward to an invite to your house up at Lake Naci Mento. Cheers. Salud.
Greg, our city has been blessed to have you as our native son, city manager. You have loved the employees, the residents, the businesses like no other. I am so grateful for your leadership, your steadiness, and your friendship. I wish you and Julie much happiness and success in the next chapter of your life. Thank you and God bless.
Greg, I wanted to say congratulations on your retirement. It's pretty cool. You were born, raised, educated in the city of El Segundo and you get to call yourself one of City of El Segundo's city managers. It's pretty cool. You know, I hope you enjoy your time in Paso Robos. I hope that retirement is everything it's cracked up to be. And I promise I'll do my best not to text you on a regular basis, asking you questions and tapping into your, your knowledge of town. Really appreciate our time together. I'll miss our one-on-ones and good luck to you.
Congratulations, Greg. In 32 years of service, you've managed to shepherd us through the fall of the Brentland Wall, new kids on the block, and even an issue with a golf course. I look forward to visiting you in Paso Robos and drinking all of your wine.
Great. We are so excited to hear about your retirement. We wish you the best of luck going forward. We appreciate everything that you've done for the city, the time that you've spent, and hey, happy water skiing. Enjoy retirement.
Happy retirement, Greg.
Happy retirement.
Greg, this is Parks and Rec Commission. Congratulations and happy retirement. Hope to see you in the parks. I'm sure you'll still be around.
Thanks for all your years of service, Greg.
Thank you, Greg, for all you've done for the city. Thank you.
Hi, Greg. We really would like to thank you for all of your support to LA Air Force Base. You've been wonderful at taking care of us, being our honorary commander. And so, the leadership team here just wanted to say that you were truly.
Second in line.
Well, Greg, I guess this is goodbye. I can't believe it's been 11 years since I've met you. It literally feels like yesterday. I've worked for government for the past 30 years and you are by far the most intelligent, hardworking, and honest person I've ever met in my life. And it takes a while to figure this out because you're so unassuming and humble. But under that surface, I know I've seen a warrior for the past decade, giving everything he's got for this city. El Segundo is lucky to have raised such a great son. And I feel lucky to have worked with you for the past decade. And I hope we remain friends for decades to come. Thank you for everything and congratulations.
After the Treasury team, we want to wish you congratulations and good luck on your retirement. As part of your exit, we need to audit your test before you go, though.
What's this?
What's this? What's this?
Greg, from the clerk's office, congratulations on your retirement. Peace out.
Greg, on behalf of the entire El Segundo Police Department, congratulations on your retirement. There's no doubt in my mind that this community is a safer place because of your steadfast commitment to public safety. I wish you all the best in retirement. You're going to have a great time up on the lake. Take care, my friend. Hey, Greg Carpenter, congratulations on your retirement. On behalf of the men and women of the El Segundo Department, we wish you a healthy, happy, long retirement. And like I've always told you, safety's no accident. Congratulations.
Hey.
Greg, we're really going to miss your support and leadership.
And the confidence that you have in us.
But most importantly, we're going to miss your killer dance moves.
Your sense of humor.
Your genius marketing ideas.
Plus, you're really easy to buy a gift for.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Happy retirement, Greg. Bon voyage from the HR department.
10 seconds? That's not enough time for all the good things I want to say about Greg. I mean, can we do this a little bit longer? It's really.
Greg, from all of us at the finance team, we have a special message for your retirement.
Dejue, my man.
Sayon.
Felicidades.
Buena suerte.
Debe de si.
Congratulations and happy retirement.
Happy retirement, Greg. For the past 30 years, I've shared you with the city of Long Beach, the city of Lawndale, and for the past seven years, the city of El Segundo. I'm happy to finally have you all to myself. And to make sure that you're not bored, I've created a list of just some small projects for you to get accomplished during the first year of your retirement. I put it on a big post-it. I've also put it in an Excel so that we can, we can track your progress. Happy retirement.
Hi to you, Greg.
Congratulations.
Ome de tozai mas.
Happy retirement.
Hi, Greg. On behalf of Kevin, Emily, Riley, and I, we'd like to wish you congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. Thanks for being such a great civil servant to the El Segundo community. We wish you all the best. Cheers.
Congratulations, Dad. I'm so happy for you. Happy retirement. We've had so many generations of carpenters that have lived in El Segundo and I know they and I are really proud of you for the work that you've done for our community and our home. So, thank you, I love you.
Greg, you made it. So happy for you. Proud of you, Parks. Cheers.
But it has been a lot of fun, and I do want to thank, probably Darnell did, and Stevie and all the guys at El Segundo TV probably did a lot of work on that, and I really appreciate it. And it's kind of hard to watch, because I hate to show emotion in public, and I try to never do it, but that was hard to sit through, because so many good memories. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Greg, and we'd like to present you with the key to El Segundo, so that you can open the door anytime. You're always welcome in our hallowed hall. So let's all do...
(laughing) On one, two, three, I'll take a few. Perfect. Great, thank you.
Well, Greg, we're so happy to have you as part of our community, the city, and we just can't thank you enough. And the video does not do justice what you've given to our city, so thank you very much on behalf of all of us. John, anything, any words, final words?
I will when it's my turn.
Okay. All right, moving on to city attorney.
Yes, just briefly, I would like to thank Greg for having had the opportunity to work with him for about the past ten-plus years. Really has been quite an experience. I've worked with a number of city managers, and I have to say, by far, and I'm often behind closed doors with Greg when we're talking about matters, and so it's not just how he is in public, it's how he is in private. He treats everyone with dignity and respect. He truly, regardless of whether it's a member of the public, an employee, council members, he really tries to treat everyone fairly and respectfully, and it's really a great tribute, or just a great set of skills. And also, when he's dealing with issues, whether it's, they're good, bad, otherwise, we've dealt with a lot of issues in the last seven years. He's always managed to keep his composure and to stay very even-keeled. I don't think I've ever actually seen him get upset, and it's really quite an amazing set of talents and skills that you brought to this job. And I'm going to miss working with you, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk.
Sure. I think the city clerk must have ended up on the editing floor, because we were in there originally. But anyways, on behalf of the city clerk's office, we would like to wish you happy retirement. It's been great working with you. Thank you. And I also have, I don't know, consideration of possible action regarding council consensus to cancel the Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 city council meeting.
So moved? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call? Do we do a roll call?
Aye.
(laughing)
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Aye.
Councilmember Bran?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Perstak?
Aye.
And we know how Mayor Boiles feels.
God, that's a five-o.
Five-o. Pat five-o. Yeah, five-o. Setting the record here.
All right, treasurer. Krista, would you like any?
Just want to say congratulations, Greg. You made it. I was going to be in.
All right, councilmember Pimentel. Any reports?
Just had my voice too. A thanks and a congratulations to Greg. I won't belabor it, but it's certainly been a even-keeled mentor to some other people on the guys, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Nichol?
You know, it's like an echo chamber in here, but, you know, congratulations, Greg. I think it's, I will say it again, pretty cool. You know, this is your hometown, and I know how it feels, and to be able to sit in that chair and say you're the manager and know that you're in charge of it all is pretty neat. Besides that, First Art Walk is this Thursday. I hope we can all come out and enjoy the festivities. It's something the city got behind, and so I think we need to get out there and support all these artists.
All right, Dr. Bran?
Yeah, Greg, thank you very much for all that you've done for the city here that you love so much, and I wish you the very best in the years ahead in retirement. Hopefully, you won't screw it up like I did, and you'll really get out there and enjoy yourself. But a lot of transactions have come across your desk in the last seven years, and it's been amazing. Thanks for your service, yeah. On a serious note, summer is about to come, okay? Couple, three days, I think. So this is the last time you'll see me for a long while, with a bowtie and a nice suit from Mike the Tailors, El Segundo Tailors. We're going to Hawaiian shirt mode. You know how that goes, right? So that starts next meeting in July. Get your Hawaiian shirts out, dust them off, and put them on. Thank you.
Okay, so for me, thank you, Greg, again. I just want to thank you, and I hope Julie doesn't task you too much with those projects. Gave me some, I, I know, she wasn't joking.
She's got KPIs.
Yes, she does.
She'll work with Joe on the KPIs.
No, she wasn't joking. But thank you and congratulations. And I wanted to congrats, give congratulations to all the graduates who've graduated this last week in El Segundo, as well as Da Vinci. I want to remind everybody about the summer concerts. We had our first one on Father's Day. Thank you to the Parks and Recs Department. There was quite a few people attending. I know that this is the first time we allowed people to bring alcoholic beverages, and I feel we didn't have any problems, right, chief?
No.
Everything was great. So I want to thank El Segundo for honoring the guidelines and doing a great job. And I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth, and we do have a lot of festivities, as Meredith pointed out. This is a busy time for our Parks and Recs Department. There's a lot of camps going on, the parks are going to be full on the Fourth of July, so everyone be safe with your firework. Actually, we don't allow fireworks, right, chief? No fireworks in the city of El Segundo, other than the ones at the park. Otherwise, the police will come and confiscate them, right? All right, but that's all I have. Anything for you, Drew? Mr. Mayor?
Real quick, I had a few minutes to speak at the Councils in the Park with Councilman Pimentel, and talk about Greg's legacy. Greg, thank you so much. It's been a real pleasure and honor working with you, and I look forward to leaving New York Lake Naci Mento behind your boat, hopefully, out of there. Thank you.
Thanks for staying up.
All right, at this time, we'd like to have any public communications?
I've never done this before. Is there a protocol?
Do you have three, five minutes?
Great.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Jim Cook, a resident of the town, and I want to thank you all for your service. It's never easy to weigh the present versus the future, and I'm concerned about the future of the golf course. I enjoy that golf course. I'm retired appropriately, and I enjoy it every day, Monday through Friday. It's a resource that we have that I can attract friends from throughout the South Bay to come up and play at. And I have concern that, in the interest of short-term financial benefit, that we lose a long-term control over a resource that's very unique. And it's part of the fabric, I think. The number of people I play with from town on a daily basis is enjoyable. It's a chance for us retirees to get out and find a place in town that we don't have to pay for coffee, don't have to pay for anything other than a chance to walk on grass that somebody else mows. And so it's very much, you know, on my mind that, as you move forward, I understand the rumor circuit that you'll be facing a decision very soon. I ask council to seriously consider the legacy. We heard a lot about legacy and value added over a long career, and those things can't be changed easily. They're built a block at a time, and so I would just ask that, as you consider that decision, weigh the future against the short-term benefit. Thank you.
Carl Jacobson, I just want to wish you the best. You helped us out of a tough situation when you accepted the job. Thank you very much.
See no more public communications. We'll close public communications, and we do have a memorial tonight, which I'll read. Donna McCarthy, ninety-four, passed away on May 30th, 2019. Donna was born in Kawada, Oklahoma, and later moved to Manhattan Beach before settling in El Segundo. She retired from Western Airlines in 1987, where she earned the nickname "The Flying Granny." She spent her retirement years volunteering all over El Segundo. She worked with the Chamber of Commerce, the Johnson Center, and Chevron. She volunteered at the El Segundo High School Library for over twenty years. As an original resident of Park Vista from the day it opened in 1987, she was fundamental in creating social programs, decorating for each holiday, and connecting the residents with the community. She was honored for her work in 1998 by being awarded El Segundo Senior Citizen of the Year. She loved to be needed and constantly offered to lend her hand to any person, organization, or service club she could find. She loved to garden, solve crossword puzzles, travel, and spend time with her family. She was a beloved mom to Nancy, deceased Kevin, Laura, and Peggy, and loving grandmother to her nine grandchildren and eleven great-grandchildren. She'll be terribly missed but not forgotten. So that closes our meeting. The meeting is adjourned.